In Mahoney County. Meeting to order, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning. Okay, we've got lots of good stuff going on. Mark here, Dwayne here. All right, we'd like to start off with public comments. If anyone wants to address the board, we ask you to come up to the podium, give you three minutes, and give your name and address, please.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
My name is Mark Luke. I'm here today as a representative of the Borbman Youngstown Kiwanis Club. We coordinate the Borbman Memorial Day Parade and Service every year. It's our privilege to do so in our community. So part of my responsibility is ours to go out and speak and promote it, as well as to inform various governmental entities within our county of our plans. So this will be our 119th consecutive annual Borbman Memorial Day Service and Parade. We're very proud of that fact, that we have not stopped that over all these years in Borbman Township, starting in 1904. The purpose of it is, of course, Memorial Day. It's a very special day in our country. It is by federal law the only national day of mourning that we have. It's a day that we set aside rightly and justly to remember those who gave their lives in military service in defense of our country, in defense of our freedoms, in defense of our way of life. So in Borbman, what we do is we have a parade and a service, and part of that is to get ODOT approval to close down the roads in Borbman Township, meaning Route 7 and Route 224. So part of my responsibilities are to inform the county commissioners, as well as the various departments, Engineers Department and Sheriff's Department, of our plans to block those roads for that day. So I provided you today with our planning sheet of what we were doing for our Memorial Day Parade and Service, as well as the ODOT letter confirming that we are allowed to do those things. Our parade starts at Borbman Center School, proceeds northbound on Market Street, turns right eastbound on Route 224 to Borbman Park. So that's the parade route. And then our service occurs at 11:00 a.m., or immediately following the parade in Borbman Park. Our speaker this year will be United States Congressman from the 6th District, Bill Johnson. Now, this is not a day for politics or politicians, and I've talked to the congressman about that, and he understands because he's a United States Air Force veteran of 26 years. So he will give us a nice message that day. Another thing we want to talk about is asking you to hope and pray for good weather for that day as well, because it's an outdoor service. But we try to get a flyover every year, which can be its own set of red tape, as you in government can appreciate. But this year, I reached out to a friend of mine, who was our speaker in 2019, Lieutenant Colonel Christopher DeBosey. So he will be flying down here from Selfridge, Michigan in a UH-60M Blackhawk helicopter. And he will conduct our flyover for the day. We also have plans for him to land the helicopter in Borbman Park and for having he and the co-pilot participate in our service. So we're very excited about that. And again, this is a celebration of our country. It is a thankful remembrance of those who gave their lives for us. And, you know, in all candor, we will get in good weather thousands and thousands of people that will come out along the parade route, but not as many come to the service. And that's part of what I'm doing here today, is to encourage people to come to that service, to really hear what it means, and to recognize and remember the people who gave their lives for us. They surrendered their lives in the altar of freedom so we could come here today, give these types of meetings, engage in the lives and the lifestyles that we choose to. And so we think that's very important to remember those people. So we encourage all of you to join us on Memorial Day, May 29th, in Borbman Park, the parade, and then the service is at 11:00 a.m. Sir. Any questions that I can answer for anyone, or any of the Borbman heads?
No, great. There's a, you know, I know we go to the one, or I go to the one in Austintown, you know, every year as well, too. So it's a great opportunity to really understand and participate and memorialize. I always hearken back when we come on Memorial Day to, I had an opportunity to be in Europe for work about 20 years ago, and I remember driving to Luxembourg and passing Bastogne. And it was the first time I really realized that that was where the Battle of the Bulge was, and I was right there. And I drove to the memorial site they had there, and, because my dad's brother-in-law was killed in the Battle of the Bulge. And so it's always gives us time to reflect back and remember all those that lost their lives. And, you know, and it hits on the family when I go back to that, even though, you know, I didn't know them, you know, but it was, you know, my family, so.
Yeah, it's a wonderful opportunity.
Yeah.
You know, we live our lives, and we trip through them, and we think we have such problems, right? We have such concerns, or we just don't think about the blessings that other people paid for us.
That's true.
So it's a day for us to pause.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Robert?
Weirdly on this side. Robert Santos, I'm not here as a resident, I'm here as an Austintown Township trustee. As you guys know, in Austintown, if you guys don't know, we had three huge hiccups that came up that we actually had a fund that was going to put a huge, huge, huge damper on our road funds, which is going to extremely prohibit and prevent us from doing some services in Austintown. So honestly, the first option we went was go to our state legislators and our commissioners. And while they were looking and reviewing, we were thinking of other options, some options not as well as appealing as some of Mike's. Obviously, the last thing we want to do is tax the residents, especially in this day and age with inflation going through the roof. And we already know our pockets are empty already. So I just wanted to come here personally and thank each and every single one of you guys for approving that. It's actually $348,000. So for a road budget that we have, it's a little over $2 million. Half of that is with labor, and the other half being spent on three projects. You know, we've greatly, greatly diminished the ability for us to actually do anything in the road part within Austintown. So I definitely want to come here and thank each of you personally. As a personal note, what I want to say is, I am extremely humbled. I was honestly worried when I first got elected. People know I'm a Republican, hardcore Republican. Now, believe it or not, it was a concern of mine, I was worried. And I am man enough to come here and say I am wrong, and I'm glad you guys proved me wrong, and I apologize. And I want to thank you guys for not letting that. We definitely won't agree politically, but I'm glad you guys did the right thing for the residents of Austintown. And I'm humble enough to say thank you, and I was wrong, and I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Bob. One thing I'd say to that, Robert, is in Austintown, we run as nonpartisan, you know, for 20 years. You know, when you're locally elected, I know everyone says that all politics are local, but in county government down, in my estimation, I think the boards, that there is no partisan politics. You know, we work on behalf of our community, and we do what's right for all the political subdivisions from the county level. And in the township, you know, I went through 20 years as a trustee trying to fix flooding problems in Austintown. And when I was over putting backflow valve stops in people's homes on my off time, not one of them asked me if I was a Democrat or Republican. You know, they just wanted help with their problems. And I think as local politics, you know, whether it's our Board of Trustees, or your Board, or our Board of Commissioners, or your Board of Trustees, that we all need to work together and do what's right on behalf of the residents of Mahoney County, and Austintown, and all the political subdivisions as a board. Because as we see in Trumbull County, it happened in Borbman at one point in time. When you bring politics onto a board of three, normally you all lose. You know, because the general public doesn't want to, doesn't want to see conflict with the people they elect, and they take it out on everyone, you know. So it always behooves us to make sure we're just working for the residents. And, you know, and I know that our board looked at the same problem with Borbman when they had, when we helped on the Market Street project. You know, if we have the ability to help the residents and to alleviate flooding problems, you know, we make sure that we try to participate in any way, shape, or form. It was a good project. And I know I talked quite extensively to Mike Dockery, Darren Cravelli, you know, about the project, as well as my colleagues did. So, yeah, we appreciate the work you're doing there.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'm sorry for the tens of thousands of emails, I'm sorry, just.
No, it's all good.
Always consistent.
It's all good.
Thank you, I really do appreciate it.
You have, you've done far less emails and phone calls than Judy Peko does about the dear to me. You know, I get a call a week, or a call a day from Judy. So, you know, God bless Judy.
Lots of emails, tons of emails.
God bless Judy. Okay, anyone else? I mean, you guys could.
Yeah, I'm good.
Anyone else like a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of Board meeting number 15, Thursday, April 20, 2023, and approval of bills for payment.
So move?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Advertisement for Bids, Coroner's.
Jimmy.
It's for their testing that they need, for their toxology, laboratory services.
Okay, motion for Advertisement for Bids.
Motion approved, Advertisement for Bids, number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Legal notices, jobs and family. Audrey. Audrey, can you hear us?
She's moved.
Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, apologize for that. Legal notice, good morning, first of all, to Commissioners Audrey, Nancy, and Jim. Legal notice, job and family service, public hearing on proposed job and family services, Title 20 Social Services Plan to be held on Friday, May 19, 2023, at Oak Hill Renovate Building. Thank you.
Legal notices.
Motion approved, legal notice, number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion approved, journal entry, number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Okay, agreements, auditor, data.
Good morning, everyone.
Oh, pretty good.
I'm looking at the board right there. This is an agreement with an Involta to transfer IP space in addition to its existing managed service. This is non-general fund for $28,250.
Commissioners, OMB.
Commissioners, this is an agreement with FSC Computer Solutions, Inc. for debt management software for four years in the amount of $13,500 for the first year, and it is general. This is a new program that we're working on ourselves, the Auditor's Office, and Sanitary, in order to better track our debt.
Okay. Come on, Audrey, we don't have any debt.
We don't have any debt? Hmm, okay. None whatsoever.
Nope, it's all gone.
No, it's all gone.
Convention and visitors, Linda.
Good morning, everyone. Letter C is an agreement with Infinit Synergy for our ongoing website support, maintenance, updates, hosting with all of the security and firewalls and promotion, driving people to visit our website in an amount not to exceed $50,000. And this is non-general. And letter D is an agreement with Youngstown State University Athletic Marketing Department for advertisements in the football program for this season, as well as basketball later on this year, in the amount of $3,000, non-general.
Thank you, Linda, hazmat.
Commissioners, this is an agreement with National Fire Council. It's for training for the hazmat team. It's at no cost to the county.
Okay, sheriffs, Jim.
F is an agreement with Warren Glass and Paint Company, LTD, for the replacement of wood base in the jail, in the amount of $24,335, non-general.
Motion approved, agreements.
Motion approved, agreements, letters A through F.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Change orders, auditors, data.
This is change order number two with Tiberia for the domestic E-court filing services. They, the Supreme Court said they had to have a text box that was not gender-specific, so they had to add an extra box. So that's what this is. It's 1320, and it is non-general fund.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Motion approved, change orders, three.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion approved, resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficante? Commissioner Traficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. All right, resolutions, building inspection. Jeff?
Good morning, everybody.
Jeff, look at how clean-shaven you are.
You like that?
Yeah, you know what? You look 20 years younger.
That's what everyone's saying. I don't feel it, though. This resolution is for, as needed, commercial plan review services for master plans examiners. This is basically a replacement of one that's expiring at the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioners, resolution approving the appointment of Audrey Tillis as county administrator under the authority of the RC 305.29. Do we want to vote on that separately, you know, and?
Okay. I think item C.
Like we do Nancy. Okay, Commissioners, OMB, C.
Item C, indeed. Commissioners, this is a resolution providing additional funding from the General Fund to the Mahoney Valley Law Enforcement Task Force Fund in the amount of $62,000. This will be for operations. Item D is a resolution approving the following voucher per Ohio Vice Code 5705.41 for City Printing Company, for the recorders for both of them, $291.12, $749.61. And I didn't mess up my numbers.
That's because they were all small ones. You only mess them up under the hundreds of thousands, yeah. Okay, dog warden. I thought I saw Diane up there.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
And this is a resolution accepting our Ohio Pet Fund grant for spay and neuters. This way, we can spay and neuter the dogs prior to them leaving with their new owners. And this is the third year in a row we've gotten a max grant for $2,500.
Nice. Did you leave one of the cage doors open at the dog pound today?
For you, sure.
No, we saw Dave Nelson wandering around the halls of the courthouse.
You know, there's not a lot I can do with him. He knows all the hiding spots.
He has all the keys, too. Hazmat, EMA hazmat. Jim?
Anna.
I think Anna.
Oh, Anna, you're going to do that one? There you go, Anna, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the resolution in support of an application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the State Homeland Security Program in the amount of $135,900, with no local match required.
Good deal, thank you. Engineers, Patrick.
Morning, everybody. Letter G is a resolution approving the moral obligation payment of $1,786.49 to Columbia Gas. This was for repairs to a damaged gas line on March 9.
And how come we can't see you? You having a bad hair day?
Yeah, it's all falling out.
I know the feeling. All right, thanks, Pat. OMB grants.
Commissioners, this is a resolution authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council 2023 Community Event Sponsorship Program Fund in the amount of $1,750, with no cash match required. We're going to propose to utilize those funds for solid waste community events. And letter I is a resolution in support of the application to Connect Humanity for the Appalachia Digital Equity Accelerator Grant in the amount of $30,000, with a $20,000 local match combined with incurring cash.
Okay, thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Resolutions, motion.
Motion approved, resolutions, letters A through I.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Okay, well, before we go to the good of the order, we have the good of the month in the community and the way it should be every day. Dwayne, would you like to come up? We have proclamation for Mental Health Month.
I was going to tell you, the best thing you did was merge the boards, but the best thing you did was make Audrey Tillis County Administrator.
So, the best thing we did was appointing you to oversee the boards that we merged, you know, and your staff, because collectively, you've done an amazing job, and we're honored to give you the proclamation and to make sure people are aware of Mental Health Month, so.
Thank you.
We thank you for your hard work.
For all your hard work, phone calls at all, hours in the day.
Well, the thing with mental health, I just, thank you. And as I said, we merged the boards and said the story 100 times. It was the easiest merger in the whole state. We just merged. Other county boards, when addiction and mental health merged, there were lawsuits and fights, and we just merged because it was a thing to do. And, you know, we hit the ground and never stopped running. And Governor Dewine said, "Mental health isn't broken, it hasn't been built." Well, he's building it. The only challenge we have is there's no workforce. You know, we're all facing the same way. We're just trying to find counselors and people that want to be filled. Thank you very much. We're happy, best relationship with the Commissioners, you know, with the Sheriff and all the Department heads. It's a good place to work, thank you.
We don't want anybody to call in and wait.
I hold my belly here.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Good to meet you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So quiet.
It's all good. Joe, you got it? Rattle off a few, liven the place up. No, God, no. Okay, thank you, Dwayne. Appreciate it very much. Okay, good of the order? Anybody? Audrey?
Once, thank again to the Commissioners, one for making me administrator when we were going down through the pandemic, and then continuing it through now. Thank you for your confidence in me and doing the work. And they are great to work with, they really are.
Crazy, but we're good.
No, they're real, and that's great. They are just real, they're passionate about what they do. And working with all the staff and all the departments and everything has been a blessing to me, you know, to be able to say, "This is my county," and then I can have an impact on it. So thank you for allowing me to do that and to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey, for the amazing job you do.
Thank you.
You're a prime example of when you put good people in positions, good thing happens, so.
And there's a lot of good people that I work with, so I appreciate all of them. Wouldn't do anything without it.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Anthony?
Sure, I just say to Audrey what a hard worker she is. She has probably the toughest job in Mahoney County, because everything comes to her, and then she has to filter everything out to the three of us. And she's done a magnificent job of doing that. She has a great grasp on the functions of county government, both on the monetary side, social side, and, most importantly, the humanistic side. So it's been a pleasure to work with you, Audrey, and look forward to many more years of good government. Mark, Luke, thank you, 119 years, that's a long tradition that you have continued on in Borbman with the Kiwanis. I am going to try to make your service, I have one prior to that. And then I will come over, and I also want to tell Mark, if any of you don't know Mark, he's one of the best MCs in the area. He runs all those candidate forums, he provides us food, and he knows how to run the room. So it's always a pleasure for all the good things that you've done in Borbman. Diane, congratulations for keeping that grant going that we got. It's the third year of it. You've done an exceptional job. And of course, Dwayne and his staff. What would this county be without our mental health professionals? And honestly, today, if you see what's going on in the world, everything is about mental health. And I don't care how you look at it, how you cut it up, how you try to divide it up. If we don't get people in treatment, if people do not have access to rehabilitation centers, to counselors, to psychologists, to doctors, there is no helping society, because there are a lot of people in this community that we all know, and I know personally, who are hurting. And they're trying to reach out. And if that phone call is not answered, or if that hand is not extended, that person may decide to take their life, or do something or cause somebody else to get hurt or possibly die. So your agency and your staff, all that you do, Dwayne, it's a lot. And we're very glad to have you. And you made a statement earlier about Governor Dewine is really pushing this. Thank God, because I was once in the mental health profession. And there are folks who are seriously, seriously in need, and I'm just proud to work with a group such as you. Mr. Santos, you do a great job as trustee. Thank you for your persistence. You have your community at heart, and we were glad, as a Board of Commissioners, to be able to help you in Austintown. And it's always a pleasure knowing you, and I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Anthony. Carol?
Well, I echo those sentiments, but I got to say, Audrey, your honesty and your integrity are impeccable.
Thank you.
And we have many good directors and many good supervisors, and we really do. But when it comes to being an administrator of a county, and you've had that, it's not like it's a new job, because you've been doing it since the pandemic, three years. And, but, we just had to finalize that and give her what she needed to have to move forward with us. And you're always honest, and you tell us what you think, and you, the integrity that you put with that is just unbelievable. So I do thank you for what you do for us, and the calls I call at night and bench and mom, don't print that. And she tells me, "Well, we'll just discuss this in the morning." Well, by the morning, I'm okay, you know. What are you going to do?
We need the sounding cord.
Yeah, we need sounding cords. Dwayne, Mark, I'll start with Mark. You do a great program. On Memorial Day, I come to the service part. That parade, I don't even, I don't know that I could even say that that is a parade. I mean, I don't feel that. I mean, to honor the veterans who are no longer here is, would be what you do at your day, at Borbman Park at the end of it, I think, has got a lot of meaning. And when we went down for the Vietnam vets with Jimmy, I mean, it brings back everything, I mean, that you remember from, well, I would remember from that war and those after. But it just hits your heart when you think some of those people, or some of those young people, 15, 18, 19 years old, didn't even come home. So that's a solemn day. And you're right, it is not political. It is strictly for respect. And Dwayne, I'm sorry I'm taking long, but Dwayne, I got to tell you, and Brandon, Mark, Dwayne, I call Dwayne weekends, during the day, during the night, 10 o'clock at night. And you know what? You never, you pick up. And that, that says something, that you actually, as a director of that mental health board, when I call and say, I, I need help for somebody, could you get me something right now? I mean, and that's when they're in that situation and you do do that. Damn, if you don't call me back maybe an hour or two later and say, I gotta take care of, they're gonna be doing this.
Yes.
I'm gonna go there.
Get a couple shots of whiskey and then call you back.
Well, probably.
About Audrey, I'm just amazed you pick up the phone. I call her early in the morning and late at night and you pick it up, so that's.
Well, that says something about, and Jimmy, I've called Jimmy all hours of the day or night, too. And I'm surprised, they do pick up. And Jerry, you're rolling your eyes saying, I don't. But you pick up too, Jerry, when I call you.
He picks up when I call the sheriff, too.
But thank you, everybody. Keep up the good work for our second largest township. You have, you have good people. Monica and, and a good, good partner there, so keep up the good work.
Okay, well, you know, I, you guys have covered pretty much, but Mark, I, I really thank you for the, you know, the insight on Memorial Day and, and keeping, making sure everyone's aware and keeping abreast of it. And I know that a good friend of mine that I talked to a week ago, he was, he, he got to go out to Europe over the last two months on vacation because he retired. Him and his wife went for several weeks and they went to Normandy, you know, and, and they saw the, you know, the, the beaches and, and he said that, you know, standing in that area, because I believe he had a brother that was killed in Normandy. And he said that, you know, those young Americans never had a chance, you know, coming in, that, that just thousands, you know, and, and to, to be put in that situation, I know that we, we honor ones from on Memorial Day, veterans on Memorial Day that lost their lives, but, you know, to see the battles that, that these young kids, you know, just kids went through. They did a story from my, my godparent, my godfather, his name was Jim Jones, he passed away two years ago, about five years ago. He was 14 and he changed his birth certificate and enlisted in the Navy when World War II started. When he got finished with his first stint in, in the Navy, he still wasn't old enough to enlist. He went in at the age of 14 and they, they did a story in the vindicator on him, it was pretty, pretty amazing that, you know, I, I had the pleasure of knowing him my whole life till he passed and, and what a great, great individual. But yeah, Dwayne, Mark, Brenda, you know, thank you so much for the work you do. And Dwayne, you know, you, you brought back memories of, you know, how wrong it is in government for not to move in the direction, you know, that's necessary and to have battles merging the board. I know the only reservation was is that, you know, was coming, well, the only one that took a leap of faith was you, you know, because we had to dissolve the boards and merge the boards and then appoint you as the director so to make sure that everything was gonna happen the way it was supposed to happen. And, you know.
To tip her a job.
Yeah, yeah. And, and to, and then to, to come into where we are today and, you know, great people, you know, we talk about Audrey and Audrey and yourself and Mark, Brenda, we have so many good people that are in our staffs and work, you know, collectively with us that it's never about politics or issues, it's always about what we can do for the people we, that we serve. And you guys are a prime example and we thank you for all the hard work that you do.
Funny story about the merger, I was there two days and I called her office and mental health board had never called the drug and alcohol office. She picked up the phone and she saw the extension, she says, yes? And I said, you got any drugs? She came right over.
Oh, my God, I like that.
Yeah, how true, how true.
Joe?
You know, when, when we're talking about Audrey, it's, you know, we're making phone calls in the middle of the night, you know? I call her or talk to her and that, you know, I want to kill somebody and she'll just say, we'll pray for them. Pray for you, we'll pray for them, you know? And that's always her, her response is, you know, no, no, we're gonna pray for them, you know? So it's all good and, and that's, she's been bringing that, you know, approach to us. Yeah, so, but yeah, when you, when you put good people in positions, good things happen. And our county government is a prime example of that with the people that work on our behalf, so. Right, Nancy?
Yes.
Would you like to add anything?
No.
Nancy is a woman of very few words. Anyway.
She can say what she wants.
Oh, no, no, yeah, she'll yell at me later, I know. All right, with that said, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner? This is Audrey Morales, hi. Can you, nah, clicked out, I can't even see myself, so I don't know what we did, but can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to add one thing and congratulations to you, Audrey, as all of the commissioners said and everyone, you are exemplary a person with integrity and no one more deserving than you. I depend on you a lot. You're very fair, open-minded, and you do say the same thing. Let's just give pizza a chance and I appreciate that. But what I wanted to add from Job and Family Services, the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services will be honoring fatherhood. They will have a day where parents or families can submit or children a video to the state of Ohio. A parent or guardian or youth must submit the video and application and it must be submitted electronically by Friday, the 12th, uh, May 12th. The winners of that, they'll select 50 people and the winners of that contest will get a free admission to the National Museum of the United States Air Force located in Wright Patterson Air Force Base near Dayton. This will be posted on our website as well. So this is something good coming from our Job and Family Services to honor the youth and their parents, parents that try to do a good job in this prime time with their children. So we'll, we'll post that on our, our website and just wanted you guys to be aware that this is something that we're doing locally and statewide.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And I thank all of you commissioners, in addition to Audrey, I thank you for appointing her to that position. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.